The political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Thor, do you mind leaving us in there?
Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that you attend this meeting with us and watch over us as we contemplate change and we contemplate the direction for our city and that you just watch over us and guide us in all that we do. In name of prayer.
Okay, approval of minutes from the June 17th meeting. If any questions or concerns?
Motion to approve is this one right here.
Motion by Wolf. Second. Second by Hack. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. All opposed? Thank you. All right, approval of the agenda. Any additions to the agenda or comments? Take the motion to approve the agenda, please. Motion by Hack. Second. Second by Pillar. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye. Aye, aye. Opposed? Thank you. 5A, engineers' agenda. Well, we don't have a representative tonight, but the only thing we have to report on is what's in the Monty's notes. That's the, they're gonna be in town doing chip sealing next week.
We're gonna start the chip sealing.
So, let's, let me check. Any word? Dave, have you heard anything on that manhole?
It wasn't built at the time. I talked to him last, Monty and I visited.
Yeah, he was gonna check on it and try to give the information to us, but I never did hear from him. And he did send an email.
At our HCD board meeting, we were just having casual conversation about re-establishing of the crosswalk lines on Main Street. Was that part of the line painting as it related to the street project?
Yes. They should be done all the painting, I believe, when they're done chip sealing.
Okay. I suggested that once chip sealing was all completed, that that was likely part of the painting citywide. There was just some question because some of the work had already been done on Main Street, so we're certain of that?
Yeah, Monty and I looked into it.
Okay, perfect.
It will move down to number 6, 6A. We have three reduced hall rates from SMC, under B is local permit from SMC, and C is a local permit raffle from the East Lutheran Church Women. So if anybody wants to attack these at the same time, that's fine, or if you wanna do one fell swoop.
I'll make a motion to approve all three of those.
Motion by Wolf to approve 6A, B, and C. Second, Mr. Stern. Discussion. All in favor of approving the three requests? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. So since, at the last meeting we had, we had quite the discussion from Mr. Harvey and the board. And if you look at our, the notes that Monty sent out, I guess we can agree or disagree that it doesn't make sense to reinvent what the FAA is already doing. There any other discussion or thoughts on this topic?
Well, the one that was submitted for the first reading, as I read through that more, I think it definitely conflicts then, well, conflicts from the standpoint that it makes everything that the school is looking to do with their drone program very cumbersome. Every time that they would choose to do a project, that way it was written there, they would have to fill out paperwork and submit it to the city with a start time, end time. And because I had to do the conversion weight-wise, but any drone bigger than a half a pound, I mean, that's virtually every drone imaginable. So even for recreational type of stuff in the backyard, it would, the ordinance, the way it was written there would require you to do that. So I would be in agreement to be looking at language more similar to what the school had put together. I think we can, we can put a little bit in there for, you know, what the city would consider not appropriate, but I like the idea also of following along with the FAA stipulations.
Along with that, talking to Judge Stern, he thinks that it'd be a better idea to go with the same route, it'd be easier for enforcement, and if things do happen, you know, when it comes to him, it's judgment time, it's much easier if it's already proven and tested. Pat?
I'm going back to the basic question of, why do you feel we even need a drone?
I think they can be abused, Pat. I think this, I think they could be a piece of equipment that, that...
But you don't think that the FAA and that's kind of those, having those abuses that you were...
I think since we started talking about it, we've learned more about the FAA and their rules and what the school is doing, and I think we're willing to change or look at something different. But do I think that the FAA considers what we would like to see as intrusive or in our own community? I think, I think all our communities can choose if they want above and beyond what the FAA is doing. I don't know if they consider every aspect where they do something, so...
And I, I think just as a, as a citizen, that there's probably others that are seeing a lot of activities. I know, for instance, at our place in Arizona, that community has their own governance system on the use of drones above the space of that, irregardless of what FAA says and stuff like that. So I think there may be a curiosity amongst our own citizens if, let's say, for instance, somebody's considering buying a drone for their kid or for themselves, they may, they may be curious whether or not the city has any say one way or the other on it. And if we publish an ordinance that goes along with the FAA, then at least there, they can explore that and they can see where we stand as a city.
You know, I guess like Pat's, I guess, point, I mean, when the proposed, I guess, ordinance talks about, you know, I guess, anything, I guess, anything, I guess, half a pounder, like bigger, as much as I can tell, if you buy like one of those, and that's the, you know, I guess, you know, I guess, a registered one. So really, I mean, I don't think we're gonna do much with them in passing this.
Right.
As it states, you know.
Right. And maybe just adopt what the FAA has.
Well, but, you know, as Pat, Pat had pointed out, I mean, anything like that law is probably already in effect, you know.
So your point is that if we, if we simply as a city say we're supporting the FAA, that's just redundant?
Well, I guess my point is, I'm not in favor of creating any ordinance just to create a new ordinance.
Sure.
Especially one that's what the proposed or even the revised version that are going to be very difficult to enforce. And, but then the costing of the city, a lot of money then, the benefits to the city, I think people, I realize they have to have responsibility with their drone, whether they are familiar with federal regulations or not. I don't think we're creating anything new or just saying, okay, we adopt FAA.
You know, and maybe, maybe that's all we really even need to do is make a statement that we've discussed it, we've looked into it, and we're in agreement with FAA requirements, and then not even take it as far as making it into an ordinance.
So is that your stand? Don't even create an ordinance, just say we've adopted what the FAA uses?
Well, you guys on one side made the decision on that. I'm just reading like the newest proposed ordinance that might replace, and that hasn't been decided yet.
Right.
If it was to replace it, it says that the city recognizes the legitimate concerns raised by unmanned aircraft regarding safety, privacy, nuisance, and trespass. And I think every one of those is addressed by the FAA, and I didn't see them actually do the rest. No, I saw them through adoption of the FAA regulations, which would address those things. So, you know, I don't, if you guys want, want more, that's your call. I'm just challenging you to justify it in a way that has some reason.
Sure.
Well, I just wondered, ask Pat, maybe if you adopted an ordinance and if, for some reason, it's not enforced, does that create a liability for the city? Could somebody come back to the city? Or you, I guess my question is, are you creating a liability by passing ordinances? I think you're the one that's kinda chaunching us on that already.
It's a loaded question.
I just said, I just said...
So, Pat, then...
I'm glad we're quiet, it's not the answer. That's fine.
I, I don't wanna create an ordinance for the sake of creating an ordinance here, you know, it's, so I have no problem just saying, we are just adopting what the FAA uses.
Well, I think, I think if we as a board had a concern that, that we felt as a city we needed to be more stringent than what the FAA already says, then, then there's grounds for developing an ordinance. But I, personally, I'm not seeing that. When I read through this, I, I found it to be more cumbersome and restraining on people and their freedoms, so. And I mean, clearly, we just received from Buster today, the article that was presented there of the, at least temporary approval of unmanned use of the drones and stuff like that, so.
Buster, do you have another one?
Well, the only thing I have a comment on is the fact, or if you, if you really dug into the FAA rules and regs, guidelines, they're very, very detailed, you know, so I think in terms of adopting, just saying that you're gonna follow those FAA guidelines, you're gonna have a lot of the stuff that you're concerned about covered.
So if a citizen was concerned and they came to the City Hall or a police officer and said, hey, I'm seeing these drones a lot, what is, what's the rules on this? What, what can they or can't be doing?
Yeah, I would just say that, well, we're getting our guidance from the FAA.
That may, that may, that's the future of commerce.
Yeah.
What did I say?
You keep saying, we know what you're saying.
You got it.
We necessarily don't even have to.
No.
I mean, we could, now, do we have to, is there a process of distinguishing or extinguishing the current process we're in?
The draft?
Yeah.
Well, you don't have to prove that, then you just don't create it for a second reading.
And you've, and you've got time to consider if you, if you want to revise, like the second proposal or something similar, you've got time to, you know, they don't have to be...
No, you don't have to approve.
Approve immediately after your first reading.
You know, and frankly, from our, our brief education from Mr. Harvey, he pointed out that the reason that they adopted one through the school is that the insurance company required them to, if they were going to be using this, this as part of the school curriculum, they needed to establish then a policy.
Right, yeah. And I'm not sure, I guess Monty might have any interest in this area at all, but seems it's a pretty low-risk thing for a city to start implementing a control where they were, or something that's already controlled. I guess...
Who governs that? If, if the FAA, let's say Joe Citizen comes in and says, hey, this drone's flying around my head like a big mosquito and it's driving me crazy, what's the response then to the citizen? What do we, what do we say? Call your local FAA person? I mean, who do you refer him to? You'd have to refer them to either the North Court Air and Audit, so the FAA.
Okay. Or sheriff, does sheriff's department have...
Wouldn't this be probably under this public nuisance?
It could be, yeah, yeah. I think if it's noise or something like that, sure, yeah.
The other thing about this latest one, now we're looking at, you know, you know, it's only, for only like drones, I guess, 200, I guess, 200, I guess, 250 grams and up, yeah, which is, which I mean, I guess, like Mr. Harvey had pointed out, that he thought he was the only one in the area that did like own like one that big, so I mean, this wouldn't cover...
That's a half a pound.
Cover all the, all the other ones that you can go, go to Walmart and buy.
Well, and the thing is, the 250 grams is only in the notice part. It doesn't refer to anything other than if you're gonna fly, you need to do a notice. So if we did away with the notice, you've done away with all of that. Because quite honestly, I don't wanna take everybody's notice every time you want to fly a drone, shadow.
I think it also said you had to, you had to license it as well, no?
Yeah, but that's still all under the...
FAA.
With the notice. If it's over a certain weight, you have to license it with FAA.
Yeah, and Mr. Harvey said he had to register his with FAA.
Yeah, that's an FAA guideline. If it's over a certain weight, it has to be licensed and have all the markings and...
And that's not through us, it's registered through the FAA.
When I read it there, it, to me, it didn't clearly say it was registering it with the FAA. I assumed it was registering it with the city.
But also on that notice, remember that it's, it's not required if it takes place from an operator's own private property or the takeoff, landing, and operation. Of course, that's pretty limited area in town. Basically means the boundaries of your lot. And if it includes operation, I guess, you can buzz around your own house and that's about it without...
Well, no, that's...
Notice, right?
Yeah, the notice is where the takeoff is not required, where takeoff, landing, and operation, yeah.
Right, yeah.
So I, I guess if nothing else, the main thing would be getting rid of the notice requirement because...
And that's sort of what the state implied too, that was not their favorite.
Right.
Well, they previously implied they're only in record since...
Adopting ordinance or notices.
So how do we proceed? Just like we never even brought this up, and this is, go and use our nuisance policies if someone has a complaint?
Well, you can do nothing tonight on the church of the second reading, or just delay action on the second reading. And if you choose to incorporate something in nuisance or notices, I agree with some of this, not many of them, but I'm still questioning whether it's necessarily due to this level, that's all. I like the fact that if, if somebody's operating something that presents a substantial risk of physical injury or substantial risk of damages to property, yeah, we will want to prevent that from happening or try to at least deter it.
We can like, so maybe case your answer, we can always revisit it if we're seeing abuse and, you know, things are happening, we can always come back to it and put some restraint on something.
And adopt it independently, or you can also delay action on your nuisance ordinance and work something into that ordinance, but, yeah, see how some alternatives, maybe three of them that we can act tonight, revise, or do the court.
Okay. Well, then I suggest we just take no action on the second reading tonight? Or is there a proper way, Pat, to address the second reading and say, you know, we don't wanna table it for the next meeting necessarily?
No, just delay, you're just delaying the second reading and then decide which of those options you want to make, or so, if any question.
Okay.
So delayed.
So delayed? All right, is that fine? All right, thank you. Just wanna discuss here, Monty actually put it in the notes, but last, last week I did talk to the county commissioner, who lives in charge of the landfill, that was his portfolio, and he indicated that he'd be more than happy to have the landfill have a bigger part in this whole plan. If it's, you know, he said they are getting pinched for space, but, you know, if we had to make the, the area larger, you know, and we had to help buy some more fencing or something for it, to have that as a site for impound, because it's already under lights and camera out there, so. Duane said, he's actually told me to get in touch with Terry Turnes, the Sheriff's Department. Terry's kind of the main lead in contact when it comes to impounding and moving vehicles. And Terry said, actually, it's, they've been doing this process quite a bit. The Sheriff's Department executes this for Big City and Stanton from right now, because they don't have their own police force. And it's been going very well. They actually haven't even been putting all the impound vehicles inside the fence. You know, if they're, if they're being impounded and people are having no issue with it, they're, and they become property of the county, they leave them outside the fence. If they have evidence in them for, for the insurance needs to see them, they can't be touched, then they, they'll put them inside the fence. But Terry says it's been going great. They've had a couple situations where it's been challenged in court and ordinance that they're using, and the policy is held up. It's the one that Stanton has, you just have to look 12 miles down the road, and they have, got something that's working. Terry said he would be happy to, you know, help us with this or do anything different, but I don't, yeah, Dan, question?
Pat, just a couple of questions from, from a legal standpoint. It talks about some of this, and some of the language here talks about automatic transfer of title if not claimed within five days. Or there's a section where it talks about an abandoned vehicle that's in a condition where it's worth a hundred dollars or less, title shall immediately vest in the city of Hazen. Does that just happen like magic, or, I mean, what's, what's the process that it goes through? I mean, you, you can build that with language here, but from a legal standpoint, how does title transfer if somebody doesn't respond within five days?
One doesn't.
Or does that make you cringe when you hear that?
Right.
When I read that, you know, I'm kind of a lawyer, but, but I thought to myself, I can't imagine it's that easy.
Well, it would be interesting, I didn't, was the Stanton policy attached to local care? I, I would like to see that. I know the state has regulations about that in statutes and I think under DOT regulation in terms of transfer of title, you know. Yet I've seen that same language all across the state, the municipal ordinances, so I don't, I'm not certain how they get around some of that.
And is it that easy?
To avoid due process completely, if you make something automatic, unless they consider all the notices prior to that, it's sufficient to meet the due process requirements. I can't answer that, Dan.
Okay. And maybe that's, that's a follow-up question to our friends in Stanton. In addition to getting a hold of their, their statute or their ordinance, ask them in, in real life, what, what are they doing? Does that work?
See those district court cases, even where that's been challenged, I don't know if they're published ones or not, but they still be available through my court. But, so, interesting to see what was, what was challenged and what was successful.
Yeah, and Terry said he's been watching to see what we're doing with ours, and he likes the process where we started, where we're looking at, and with having the different kind of permit, obvious permit, and if it's within, he said in Stanton, if it's, the car is not registered after one year of the tap expiring, then they, then they can start impounding. Then they give them a certain amount of time, I don't remember what, I can't remember where it's at, but to get it out of impound. If it's impound more than 60 days, then the title, so it's, it's more than five days before the title gets turned over, but...
Well, it says title to such abandoned vehicles if unclaimed shall vest in the city of Hazen five days from the date such notice is mailed.
Right, and that might have been after that 60-day...
Okay.
...impound period. It's, one of our biggest holeups has been a location to impound. I know that we have some space behind the city shop, but definitely not enough for what you possibly would move. And we don't wanna be driving around vehicles back there and falling in that stuff, so...
I thought, I thought I read in here that, that we as a city would not have any liability on damage made to those, those vehicles when they're taken from where they shouldn't be and moved to an impound area and stuff like that. And that's...
We could say that.
And that's where I also wonder, you know, I, I read through this and a lot of it, I was like, wow, if, if all of this is true, this seems, you know, pretty, pretty favorable on how we can get rid of some, some of the mess around here. But when I think about the legalities of it, that's, that's where I'm wondering.
But wouldn't, say for example, you decided to move one of these vehicles, you'd call somebody like Joe used to be down on the street. He, he would have to have insurance that when he moves a vehicle, he's liable from getting it from point A to point B and without hurting it.
Sure. And, and maybe that takes care of, care of that transfer of liability if they're willing to, and maybe they do that just by virtue of what they do for a business.
They, I'm sure they'd have to.
Monty, are these your doubts in here?
Yeah.
Under 12.202, abandoned motor vehicle defined, I do agree with Monty that this, he said, I believe based on definitions, which can be included at the beginning, this would cover boats and campers also possibly. he said, I believe based on definitions, which can be included at the beginning, this would cover boats and campers also possibly. And that's, we would, we would need that also.
So I read through that and I don't really see how that would.
Yeah, when I, when I read motor vehicle.
Right, we'd want to include it, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think a lot of times I've seen it where, you know, you start out with definitions. You do too, nuisance definition, stuff like that. I think you need to define in addition to terms like abandoned motor vehicles. You, you need to have motor vehicle.
12 213 has the definition of this pursuant to Centric.
213?
Yeah. Be reliant on Centric for those definitions and a trailer is anything that can't pull itself. So camper that's towed is a trailer.
The actual statutory reference is 3901, that 01?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and it's a series of definitions.
Okay.
That covers most everything, but they have, you know, it is kind of confusing because some people read the definition of vehicle and think that that covers all that stuff. And yet they still separately define within their definitions, like campers and all that. So you could substitute a language that says you incorporate all the definitions in 3901, if you see. And that would cover this eight pages of definitions, they had instead of just four words. Whatever you have, six or eight or seven. That'd be one way. Yeah. So technically, Pat, an abandoned vehicle, you can't be your own vehicle, it has to be somebody who abandoned it on somebody else's property. Is that correct?
It could be abandoned on your own property.
Well, good question. What does it say for a definition of abandoned? It says, it says it's on, if somebody else abandoned it on your property, or you abandoned it on public property.
So I'm, I'm going to use Dave's impala for example. So that would become a, if you want to continue work on that, that would be a hobbyist permit, correct? So now if we have a pickup that's sitting there for a year that's unregistered. And it's a year past the last, is it registration or tags on the vehicle, that could be.
It's not a man, it's, it could be junk, it could be junk if it's, if it's elevated or if it's.
Missing it.
Or missing parts. Doesn't have tags or doesn't qualify as a hobbyist or whatever the other exception.
So a hobbyist though, like permit though, because that's only good for 180 days.
180 days.
And so it's a $50 permit.
Right.
And after that, you only get it then one more time, so that means one year's time.
Right.
Well, I mean, as I mean, like Dave knows, I mean, these projects, they only done here.
Right, and, and no one expects them to be something done in here, but they might not want it sitting on the street next to their house for six years.
It can move indoors.
It can be moved indoors or somewhere else, but yeah.
Well, I asked last meeting, you know, are we going to, are we going to allow people to build more than, building size? You know, if they just, you know, you know, move their stuff inside or, or.
If they, if they want to build in their room.
Well, I know that, I know that I can pass on that you've, you've, I mean, like voted against, I guess, you know, I guess, buildings that would just use, just for, I guess, like storage.
In residential, yeah, like putting a pole barn type right next door to my house.
Both places, all residential and I guess.
Wouldn't anybody build a building, they'd have to, they're in compliance with all the other rules and regulations of the city now.
If I voted no, was it because of lot size, they exceeded the lot size? You know, someone want to put a storage container on their property that's way too big for the square footage of, maybe that's why I, I voted no. I don't remember the exact situation, Casey, but I don't see why we wouldn't allow people to build if they have, they're, they're meeting the rules of ordinances. I'd have no issue with Dave building another garage behind his if he's not violating the square footage or, you know, wants a variance on two sides of the building, whatever, so. Yeah.
Another thing about it, you know, as both did, I guess, sidewalk bike, you know. You know, the campers and stuff, they get taller and taller and the only place to park them is on the street. You know, we're going to start to allow people to build taller than, taller than, taller than I guess, garages or.
What do you think?
I'd rather them be inside, yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah, me too. I guess that's a great discussion. If someone was building camper garage, you know, and they're there for one year and they move out and so let's put a hoist in there and start a business in there. That's, well, that's what we want to see, but you know, but, but who knows, but.
Well, or the other prospect of you live in the middle of the block and this guy puts up a pole barn and this guy puts up a pole barn and you're sitting in the middle. Do you want to be that middle of the house? I mean, they're going to overshadow you by quite a bit, you might not get a lot of sunshine in your yard.
But I think we're getting.
Yeah, we're getting past that.
The point here, but I think there's, there'll be issues that have to come up. I think the bigger issue is here is getting junk cars off our streets and out of yards and eyesores. So is it a junk vehicle if someone just sets an old pickup out on their, on their driveway? And it's not, it's got all the wheels, it's got all the components, it's just not registered? Is that a junk vehicle? They could probably go up and charge the battery and start it and drive it? Is that, or?
Then they should register.
Since it's not been registered for five years, is that a junk vehicle?
For the ordinance, it can't be here.
Yeah.
I mean, and I, I.
Because it's not registered.
Well, there are a variety of things here, but that's one of them. It doesn't have a current license plate, but I think reading this in general, it looks like you guys have done a pretty good job with this. It, it covers most instances. I don't, I don't see too many loopholes.
Well, if someone that puts plates on all their junk in their backyard and then we have no.
Well, if they, if they put plates on the junk and pay a license fee on them, but then again, I, I don't know whether that, I don't think most of these people collecting junk vehicles are going to.
Do that.
Do that, that's it, but isn't technically in North Dakota, Pat can answer this question, to license a vehicle, you have to have liability insurance, is that correct? So they would have to carry liability insurance on all the junk vehicles. You have to say that, like.
You have to prove it or show documents.
Check the box on the hotline and as you know, there are many citations here for driving a hell of a liability insurance. But yeah. Well, tech, but technically, I mean, if a policeman stops me, he can ask me if I have liability insurance on my car. Can he go onto a guy's property and say that car hasn't moved in X amount of time? I'd like to see the liability insurance for it.
I don't know.
I, I think the problem is solved itself. Nobody's going to license a vehicle and set it in the yard. Might be a couple.
Maybe. I think when we started here though, it's been addressed 85, 90% of what we have to deal with and if we have other issues come up, campers. You know, I think in the winter, campers are pretty much moved in the wintertime. Dave, are you, you deal with many campers? In the summer, it's been, you know, people sit in there all week long or two weeks if the weather's crappy and, you know, it does become kind of a nuisance once in a while. I don't know if it's a you know, ticket them for, for campers that are between weekends of camping, but or we're going to make and get them off the streets. I don't know about that either, but I think we're going to be a pretty good place here right now with what we're doing. What would you, what would you guys, how would you like to proceed?
Well, I, I think there's, there's room for improvement or at least some questions that I still have on this ordinance here. And one of the things that was brought up in our last meeting was this section where it says, the last registered owner of an abandoned vehicle shall be liable to the city of Hazen for the cost of removal and storage of such vehicle. I go ahead and I go through a transaction with you, I sign over the title to you. You're obligated to take it to the DMV and, and transfer the title and stuff. And I assume that you're going to do that. Now you go ahead and you abandon that thing someplace.
True.
Now I'm liable to the city to, to pay for that thing, getting towed up to the landfill or, or whatever. And I mean, that's the way it's worded here right now.
Well, it might be the party of possession gets liability or the owner occupant of the property.
But there again, I go and park mine in my driveway and leave it there. We're, we're willing to run into.
Then he could take it off. It's not mine.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, I mean, if somebody puts something on your property and you don't want it there, you will likely either force them to take it off or they'll take it off yourself.
It just, it just begs the question, you know, that is the city willing to, to take on an expense then to move this? If it becomes contentious as to who might be, that's why I noted, is there some way of putting the proof of purchase?
Right, yeah.
I don't know how you do that.
And that's the thing, I don't see people doing that. They don't, they don't go to sale. They figure once they sign off on that, tie it and hand it to you.
People would sign it and take a picture.
Yeah, how may do?
Well, but I mean, if you're worried about it, you will.
Well, isn't technically, what I've got to read this, it's your, it's your responsibility to get the junk off of your property. And this, the way I read this, they, the city technically can put a lien against your taxes or whatever. So there's a lot of incentive to get the thing off your property that, and I think ideally the city would be covered by the fact that they can go back to the property owner and hold him liable for taxes. Is that correct, Pat? Are you staring off at this face?
Not much.
That's why I suggested the party of possession because that would likely be the owner of the property rather than previous or.
Makes sense.
Right, right.
Or owner of the vehicle.
I like, I like that approach because I'm likely not going to abandon a vehicle in your yard.
Maybe I'll tell my.
I actually had landlords had that happen. Somebody moved out and it was actually where he sold it to another guy, the guy didn't register it, moved away. Landlord got stuck with the vehicle and he's like, what am I supposed to do? I don't know what he had to do.
I just, I just feel like there's likely going to be occurrences where we, the city, will end up footing the bill. And maybe we, you know, if we, if we're willing to accept that, I mean, we, we buy old houses and burn them down to get a better rent of the, the city and stuff like that. So there are going to be times when, you know, we do lay some money in an effort to make the place a better place.
Well, it's assuming some point you accumulate a bunch of junk cars. They become a possession of the city. Theoretically, you could sell them to a junk dealer.
Yeah, correct.
Or something.
And you just use some of that, yeah. Good point.
And if people want to get their vehicle out of the impound, they're going to have to pay a fee. And that, you know, that fee might be spread out, help pay for someone else's car that we're eating, you know, kind of.
What is that?
Dave, do you have a comment?
Look, Dan, I got, you can see it from your hose, my own cover in my backyard, that is licensed. Done a pretty paint job on it. If I would want it, I could have put a baton in it and drove it here tonight. I haven't driven it in probably a year and a half or whatever. I don't need to drive it. I got my new vehicle, put it as electric car in my car. Can I put a car cover over it to get it out of sight? Is that an acceptable? You know, somebody might not like the color of my car or skates falling off, it's showing some patina, it's showing some rust. But I do have it licensed and I could drive it any day of the week. I have so desire to drive it. I don't have the desire to drive it, but you're afraid. Now should I have to build a building to put it in or rent to store it to him? I mean, it's a viable car, it's a viable car, but it isn't real pretty.
I don't think under this, so long as it's licensed.
How would that fall in this junk car?
Now, our, our, our ordinance doesn't say your car has to be pretty. It says it has to be operational, it says it has to be licensed.
Well, it's you have to get over it. If it's operational, then.
But yeah, it's an operational car, I choose not to drive it.
You can put a tarp over it, it's kind of like a brand.
Put, put a cover over it or whatever, I mean, I guess the fact that it's an old car on the side, I mean, that makes.
Now, if the cover is shredded to rat and it's in the mist, that's different.
Yeah, but I, I, I bought one of Ted Crowsey's pickup trucks when he traded it in and he probably cries every time he sees it because it's not washed the way it was. But I mean, so, so those are things that it's.
You know, that's why, like I said, I choose not to drive the car, but it is licensed, it's bad, I'm allowed to drive it. Or if I so desire, I just wondering how that was falling, you know. I mean, is it classified as abandoned because I haven't driven it?
No, it's licensed.
License, yeah, it's licensed, so I mean, all that's.
You're fine.
The issue of tarping has come up in other communities and that doesn't say.
Doesn't fly.
That doesn't say.
So if your neighbor has six vehicles in their driveway yard and they tarp all six of them, doesn't really cut them off.
If they're.
It's junk. Then you can't see them.
Lipstick on them.
Yeah.
I, I think the whole issue to me is reasonable, and we all can be reasonable. And I, but I, but you know, currently, my neighbor has three junk pickup trucks, none of which are operational. A junk car and three boats. Fifth wheel, I mean, it's, you know, the, the long and the short of this, I, I can see anybody having, you know, one extra cap or something licensed, but it's the proliferation of a whole yard full of stuff. Aren't, aren't they all licensed?
No.
But I, I think your ordinance goes a long way to solving this. I guess the real issue that I see with this whole thing and is if somebody here, one of commissioners, when you get done with this, makes a motion, then the police will be directed to enforce this. And Commissioner Stern brought this up, it's a complete waste of time. If nobody calls up a towing service and says, you know, go do that's why I see. If that isn't going to happen, then this is just wasted air.
You're right, if that's next, you're going to talk, it's going to talk about enforcement. That's, that's where, that's kind of the root of it right now too. We can have the best thing on paper, but unless we're enforcing it, it doesn't mean anything.
But I, I think it's a good opportunity to give people notice and I hope the esteemed journalists does that. But if people understand that at some point in time, this is going to be effective.
So for our next meeting, I'm assuming that we're not going to approve this or, or use it, or.
I'll send out Stanton's, I'll send out Stanton's ordinance, I have a chance for you to and make any changes, recommend any changes to pattern myself for the next meeting.
Well, what, I mean, actually, I'm having a little bit more time here. Me, you're going to, this is the second reading, right?
Well, it's, it's on the agenda.
It could be the second reading.
So you could make the next meeting the second reading.
Right, right.
But what are your, the way, could you make a list of your main concerns prior to the next going on?
Yeah, absolutely.
But I think, okay, well, that sounds, but for what is current, what, what is the problem with the current ordinance? It's, it technically, it is the ordinance and it is enforceable, correct?
Yeah.
What, what's the, you know, what's stopping that ordinance from being enforced?
Don't, don't we have a lot of built-in communicate, wait, you got so many days to respond and it, it just seemed, seemed like in the, in the current ordinance, if I remember right, it just looked like it drags on forever. Where when I look at this language, that's what caught my attention immediately was five days, nobody says anything. When I send a registered letter, then boom, it becomes the city's property and we can go hook up a tow truck to it and. go hook up a tow truck to it and haul it away type thing.
But that's just on, just on, it's like public property, not on private. On private property, it's still like a month, it's like, like, I think, 20 days.
Like you suggested, can reduce the media attention.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just have to provide the good processes.
I just, I think our current policy just makes it drag out entirely too long to where it becomes so cumbersome for our police department to engage in that, that makes it challenging.
There is a provision in the current policy, I think, for giving notices, is there?
There is, and that's what I think, there's a drag on in that. You give notice, but then they have X number of days to respond. And then if they do nothing within a certain amount of time, then there's a follow-up correspondence that's supposed to go off. And it's like a back and forth type thing that you run into two or three of those in a month, you know, then that becomes a full-time job just trying to enforce that particular ordinance. Whereas if we can find one that's more manageable from a timeframe standpoint and basically resource.
We all do, realistically, so. In theory, you could have this, when you declare your second reading, at that time, does it become effective? What's the timeframe after you have the second reading that it actually is enforceable?
It becomes effective upon publication. It becomes effective upon publication.
So you have it next week and you, on Monday, you could publish it on Wednesday and you'd be in business?
And actually, some of the current notices that you're talking about, they could run concurrently, but somebody has to start the process. If they just start the process, many of them, that's all it takes. That causes action on the part of the other party.
But that, Pat, if I totally agree with your gains, but what I understood you to say is if you started notice now, it could also be considered notice in the oncoming ordinance?
Concurrent, is that what you meant by concurrent?
About the current ordinance, if there's a, if you, if there's a 30-day window where you give them notice and then they have an opportunity to request a hearing and if they don't request a hearing within 10 days, then they forfeit this or.
Well, let me think what you want to say. If you gave a guy notice on the existing ordinance and then another one, this thing comes into effect, you say, we gave you notice 30 days ago, does that count for the new one?
That's a whole different scenario. You're talking about a new ordinance and when will it take you back?
No, I'm saying, what I'm saying is you take the current ordinance, which requires notice. You give the guy notice today.
That he's violating the ordinance?
Yes.
That he has a nuisance.
Yes. Then you pass the new ordinance, it's two weeks from now, and he says.
I won't set this up. We're not going to go up there for me in 30 days.
Okay, so by next meeting, Monty will have out the Stanton orders if we have, the police list our issues and get them to Monty and Pat so we can get some clarification on them and. Danny, look.
Are you going to follow up with whoever you spoke to originally on the Stanton policy and just ask the question? I don't know what the question was.
On the title, you mean?
Yeah.
No, has there been any objections to what you've come up with here?
No.
That sends me like a good sign.
Just yours.
So we'll talk to Stanton and see what they're, what they do with the title. All right.
And I've shared with some folks, you know, that we're having these discussions and I get favorable response, but I haven't had conversations with those people that have the dozen cars in their yard to say, hey, we're working on this so that we can come after you or anything like that. I mean, it's.
Well, I, you know, I'll frankly tell you my situation, because I'm trying to sell my house, I've talked to realtors, they say the situation's detrimental. The only good thing is with, in the summertime, the foliage and stuff covers up a lot of the problem. I need to sell my house in the summer, but if in the winter comes and the leaves fall off, then the junk car is visible. That's why I hope you guys get something done by the end of the summer. And I appreciate the work you've done on this.
Thank you.
Seems like a good start or finish, whichever.
Eight A, H and R Block is remodeling their office. So we have a.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Shannon?
No, they're serious. It's that little office space next to Constance Design. They're going to be removing the walls, putting up a couple petitions, doing some rewiring, basically just making it pretty. The only reason that they needed a permit was because of the walls. They're going to, I think, make the bathroom ADA compliant. So I'm assuming the door is going to have to be too. But anyway, that's what they're doing, just a kind of a facelift and opening it up into one base stage and taking the walls.
Okay, you know what's happening with the old building?
No.
Okay. All right, so we don't.
All we have to do is make a motion to approve the building permit for this.
Second.
Motion by Pillar, second by Wolf, discussion. Rule call.
Pillar. I. Wolf.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Hold it on.
All right. Motion carrying. Jason had to go. But you have some other streets over there. Great. So I guess Cowland approaches over there, I guess, west of town. Where are we at with that?
Curbs all jackhammered out. Because I've heard it all day. He was giving details on how they're supposed to be from the, from over engineering, you know, with the cuts and then he has to have so much slant area, the width and the slope and all of that, so. And he's been laying dirt over here and then it's more sure that it comes into compliance with what they had. And he did put safety cones out there as well. They were there when I came to the meeting today.
So there's no kind of like approval base needed then for that?
Well, he hadn't gotten the approval more informal than anything since it was only in our extraterritorial jurisdiction at the time. But yeah, the board had basically said, yeah, we can do the approaches because to get into his property, because DOT wouldn't let him drive off the highway.
So as long as he follows Moore's and they approve it at the end, it's got to be meeting their spec circumstances.
Did he get the floodway permit?
He's not in the floodway, but he got the elevation. He's above base flood elevation.
Yes.
He's not in a floodway.
So whatever he does there doesn't affect.
He got us, he got a certificate showing that he's above, one foot above base flood elevation in compliance with our zone.
Yeah. I thought that was a little different, the permit that he needed for interfering with the tree flow of Elmo Creek by putting that structure on there.
Because he's above the base flood elevation.
Shannon's been in communication with the FEMA office in part.
Unless he's putting in that ingenious.
Flow system.
Flip open the doors. Really? Because of him being higher up?
Yep. Not the water, just flow around it.
Dave, you have any other streets or cemetery?
Nope. Other than mail orders, they should be delivered this week sometime.
Hey, who's got cemetery deals?
Do you have something else? Maybe just back up on building, building that permit, I guess, I guess, if I got one. So is that approved then or is it not approved?
What, the approach?
Cowland's, I guess, his building, building permit is approved? Okay. Again, require board approval of this.
And then when I contacted the FEMA people, he just had to make sure that he was that one foot above, so the water will flow around it and it won't get up inside.
Yeah, because he got a, got, I guess, a permit. Hey, there, but it's all white.
I can just help you, you know.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Streets? Oh, yeah, it's mine. Finance, bussing.
Nothing at this time.
Police fire four street.
A report from the fire department. We had heard a conversation a couple, two, three meetings ago, talking about a potential project at the fire hall to replace windows with energy efficient windows. And we was tasked to go back to the drawing board a little bit and refine numbers and all that, get some bids. And in the meantime, I received a call from our chief this last week informing me that the rural fire department was thankful to all of the cooperation that they had received from the city of Hazen with regard to some shared expenses and different things like that. And so they are footing the entire bill. And so the windows and stuff are on order through Western Steel and Matt and folks will be installing all the windows and doing the interiors and stuff on that, the rural fire department's done.
So that was something we did not have to vote on as an expenditure? Because I.
There is.
Oh, that's true. Okay.
Right. So that was, that was good news. They're doing a good job getting that, that hall brought up to snuff and looks really nice over there. That's all.
Under four street, would you please contact Forester and I think it's time that we get the state forester to help identify Dutch on disease.
Okay.
HCD Buster, you want to stay there?
Let's see. Slide up to the chair here. Actually feeling better today than I have, so, sometimes. Anyway, I want to visit with people a bit. You know, our city was designated as a Main Street Initiative City. I had indicated to you a while ago that my AARP grant that I wrote did not get approved. And, you know, I was visiting with the CBB board and they were kind of part of that and Dave and I had talked. We still would like to see if there would be, if there would be a possibility that the city could do a couple of projects. And the one main project is that Christmas tree area. And that would be, you know, getting that tree removed. And some of the numbers that I put down for you, I mean, the application inflated a tad, but I did that purposely for the application. The one number that I think is really pretty accurate is the number for the concrete, unless again, we were able to get that donated from Great River, you know, and I haven't, I haven't really checked with them. But what we had talked about doing originally was removing the Christmas tree. There's a lot of busted concrete out there. Get all of that removed and then just reformed and probably repoured, okay? And then in addition to that, we had talked about, as part of the grant, was a couple of nice tables, outdoor tables that would go in there. And we also talked about eventually maybe doing a purple, bike rack, those kinds of things. Some of those things, I think, could be put on hold and we could do them in phases if there'd be, if the city would be willing to take a look at, probably getting rid of the Christmas tree, getting rid of the concrete and then getting the concrete in there. I think that would be a nice step for this year if that was possible because I, you know, and I can't speak for my HCD board, but I think my HCD board would maybe contribute a little bit to the project. CBB, you know, they have some reserve funds. They maybe would be able to take care of some of the furniture that we have, you know, out of their reserve possibly. But they really would like to, they really would like to see that project done because I think that would give us first up that corner. You know, and in terms of, you know, doing a purple, that isn't something that would necessarily be immediate, but maybe that could be on the radar for the future.
Or some covered shelters.
Yeah, or some, or a variation of it.
Yeah.
So again, I, you know, I can't pull the trigger on that. That's something that you folks would need to approve. But, you know, Dave and I were talking and he said, well, that, you know, he felt like he and the city crew could, with the equipment, have no difficulty, of course, getting the tree out of there or the busted concrete out of there. You know, beyond that, you know, maybe we can have the concrete crew then do the rest of whatever the forming that might be necessary. And then I was talking with President Opano earlier today and he said, you know, maybe it would be nice that we would, could do some detailed finish on the concrete, whatever. And I'm not sure.
Stamping, stamping or staining.
Which I think would be really a pretty nice gesture if we, if we could do that. So I'm not sure, so that's one piece. Another piece that we had talked about was this, and that is, is that I'm not exactly certain who's going to be responsible for painting, restriping the streets. But one of the things that we had talked about is we would really encourage if the city go from eight-foot crosswalks to 10. But Dave did mention that that'll put that stop block back a little further. But, you know, the other caveat to that that we had talked about that we thought worked really pretty well was if we could incorporate at least some striping for the bump off. Like we had experimented with last year. Last year, of course, we had the delineated poles that are off there, but we were thinking that even if we could just get that straight, you know, maybe we don't need delineated poles or whatever up there to indicate that so that, and I don't, you know, I don't know. But I just think certainly I don't see where there would be any additional cost in going from eight-foot crosswalks to 10, you know, and, and the one thing about, and the only area that we, well, we were talking about if we were going to do that, do the crosswalks. We talked about going from Mandate all the way down past the library here, okay? And then the only place that we talked about doing, doing the bump off striping would be at that intersection of the main, I'm not sure of the street, the main and whatever that is. That'd be the only place where we would do the bump off striping. And, you know, one thing about it is, is that the cross, that the stop block, excuse me, is moved back another two feet or whatever, then it probably would be advantageous to have that bump off there. So they, and they have to sneak, they kind of have to sneak out and take a look, but one thing about it is, is most of those areas aren't as congested on the corners as when you get down for the other end. So, so those are actually two, two projects I would say that CBB and HCD would really encourage, would give some consideration to. You know, if we would have gotten the grant, the work actually didn't need to be completed until November, so it's like, and of course, if you would give approval for that, well, the working with Dave and the crew, they just, I'm sure they could, I don't want to speak for you, Dave, but you probably could, they'll put it, build it into the schedule someplace down the road, you know? And I, you know, I've had certain, I have never worked with GRE asking about any of the donated concrete and I know that Terry has, so.
They're very, they've been very generous.
Yeah. And I do know that they had given a pretty good shot of donation off to the Gulfport again this year with the car. So, so anyway, I guess I entertain questions if there are, if I can't answer them. So anyway, I guess I entertain questions if there are any that I can't answer them.
Well, just start with that, the, the tree, the pine tree, which could be the, had the least needles and the most see-through pine tree in town that's still green. Yeah, it's kind of Charlie Brown tree. And it is doing some nice damage to the concrete in that area. The roots are. And, you know, it is, it is one of our ordinances that says we are not to have a conifer in city property of the boulevards and so it's. Should be, I would have no issue with removing that, have the tree removed. It's, it doesn't look very nice anymore. It's not doing well. The ash tree that is just to the east of it on, on the corner still is a healthy tree. It's misshapen, there's no doubt, but it's a tree that I don't know if, if we're gonna, if we would go down the path of removing the concrete and, and replacing it, that ash tree will eventually start, you know, trashing that up too. But if, you know, if we were to remove both trees, I would want a, really a nice plan of putting something there that's aesthetically pleasing where you could get some, have some shelter. Be a downsized version of the shelter that's in the pocket park. Would definitely wouldn't be as big. It may not even have a covered roof on it, might be the hurdle, the slotted roof type thing, but. Yeah, I think in-kind work from Dave's crew, there's, they would have that ability to do the tree and maybe some of the concrete removed.
Yeah, we have the jackhammer, I mean, we could get that center section jackhammer installed. That's not that big an area.
Right, right. So, um, thing I did mention Buster today is that maybe this is something that we want to look at when we start working on budget here shortly, is to incorporate that into this next coming budget. Because we really, we don't have anything right now in the budget for this. We have sales tax dollars, which we could use, I guess, but. I don't know, where's, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts at this, at this point would be to approve Dave and his crew to, to provide labor and support on busting that stuff out of there. And, and maybe the pursuit of dollars for it might be more suited to talking to HCD or, community development. Maybe that's where the money's come from, but we donate the, the labor and stuff like that.
And I would definitely get ahold of GRE, they have been very good at donating concrete. Now, that's a big, big, right, expense. They just want their name stamped on it for their recognition, very much so.
Casey? I was just gonna ask, you know, I mean, I know like you have kind of this, like talked about these future plans there, but I mean, maybe prior to just like pouring this concrete, to have a plan.
Absolutely. Before cutting the tree down.
Yeah, you just want to run like power here, power there or something.
Good point.
Yeah.
A lot easier to put in a stub up or something now.
And so to Buster, I think maybe get some drawings and see what, something would, would it look like a little bit more than, but I think this is. Before we spend time on drawings and everything else, I think, you know, getting approval and starting the process of.
One thing.
We can do what?
One thing about the ash tree, leaving it there, it does, it would provide nice shape. You know, and maybe there's something you could do, you know, you don't concrete all the time to it.
Right.
Bunker it or whatever, I'm not sure, but anyway.
I don't, I don't know what the root structure always operates on an ash tree. Is it going down or was it coming?
I can visit with the state forester when he comes up and.
I think that would be a good understanding.
See what, what kind of root system it has.
Right, that might tell us what, what if any kind of prep work you would have to do around it, similar to some of our boulevard trees where we, you know, we've taken away concrete, we've built buffers around that.
Okay.
So, getting back to the crosswalk. Now, will that be the city's responsibility or is that going to be the? That'll be part of the project? So in terms of conveying that information to them, we'll make sure we can get that.
We just have to make sure, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And what we talked about before you came in is they are looking to do their chip ceiling, starting up about the eighth of July here. And upon completion of the chip ceiling is when they would be coming back to do all the lion painting.
But they're not chip sealing, they're not chip sealing Main Street though.
No, no, I understand.
Right, so we, the painting could, you know, now that.
They will, they'll do all the painting in the city, all, all the way through.
The way it is and the plans.
Okay, okay, so, yeah. So, yeah, if someone could do that.
But if, if they're doing the ladder crossings, it will be my paint.
Oh, yeah, that is, yeah, that's, okay, yeah. That will be, yeah. And I don't know if they have to, do you know if that's what they had planned? Were they going to do the ladder?
My understanding is they will be.
Okay, because I know.
I'll visit with John.
Because I know last year they just did it straight. But that was, I was guessing.
I thought they did that just so we would have something. I think actually we did it last year just so there was something.
Right, oh, okay, 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 so they're with me, yeah, okay.
I'll visit with John tomorrow.
Sure.
They are chip sealing right between United State Bank and the law office there. That's, that was new all the way up, right? So they'll have to wait till that's chip sealed and cleaned up, cleaned up rocks.
It will paint until everything's swept.
Everything's clean up, yeah. Anything else Buster?
Ah, no, the fact that I'm going to be laid up for a while, I'm finally, a week from today, I'm supposed to have my surgeries.
Good luck.
Probably won't save you for a while. Rest. I'm throwing some drugs right now. I don't consider.
Chad A, chemical analysis contract. Everybody should take a look at that.
This is, this is a reoccurring deal.
Yes.
They changed the time range to be a little bit longer than almost every other year. Since they changed to a new department.
Can I ask just for explanation, is that, is that just because our own distribution system may carry some contaminants? Because Southern Southwest get tested also?
Yeah.
So this is just.
Still in our system though, so.
Once it hits our system, then we still have to be tested, either a pavement test or.
Okay.
As you can see, their prices are going. But it said their last adjustment wasn't since two thousand and eight, right?
Move to approve the contract. Motion by Stern, second by Pillar, discussion. Rule call.
Stern.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Alright, motion carried. Eleven A. Two thousand nineteen twenty board appointments and city appointments in portfolios. Let's see what Monty has up here, list.
I did send it down, I don't know, I forgot to ask Pat if it will require a change of our ordinance regarding the health officer with the information we got from Pete Johnson. That the county health officer.
Yeah, I saw the information then compared to our, I suppose we just have been there. That's an appointed office just like this. That's.
Right.
Okay, before we approve that, though, we need to talk about portfolios. Last meeting, we talked about changing some portfolios. I've not heard from anybody the last two weeks. Has there been any more discussion on changing? Casey, I, I think me, I guess Nancy was wrong. No, I got to Nancy, I guess personally, but, okay, okay.
And then Pillar, Dan and I had talked, and did you want to take water and?
That doesn't matter to me.
I think I'd be a little more comfortable with.
The police then.
The police, yeah.
So then we would move Casey to.
Library.
Finance, bussing the library. And then Dan to water and sewer. And Nancy, the police. I'm trying to.
And then if it's okay, I'll just stay on ambulance, fourth?
Okay.
Unless you want to go on it?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
And then there's a note about the, I guess, CBB board and the chamber. I haven't been covering CBB, okay. Yes, having one, okay.
Who's covering chamber? Were you still covering chamber, not anymore?
I need a chamber representation.
Should have a chamber.
Should have a chamber. I'll do it.
Chad, do we need a motion to approve these, these changes in the list, Monty, or?
Yeah, well, or if you want to incorporate everything.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Just a motion then.
A motion. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the listing that Monty put together with the changes of portfolios as noted.
Okay, move motion by. Motion by Pillar?
Second.
Second by Stern? Discussion? Rule call.
Hiller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Oppenheimer.
Aye. Motion carried. I'm gonna back, back up to nine F, I skipped myself. Uh, a couple of things quickly. I'm, I'm gonna visit Monty, we're gonna contact Carpenter to this window frame on the outside and the door frame, paint's peeling, wood's bare and looks not so nice. I think we, that can be done easily, but the bigger issue is outside of that door is rusty and the paint is gone. Maybe try to get ahold of someone who can, we have to remove the door and have it painted. Greg Boyer did, did a door for my wife at the bank and did a very nice job. I don't know if there's anybody else in town that does auto painting like that other than, he's a motor, I suppose. I don't know, they're, they're pretty busy, if they, we want to do that, but I want to take care of those couple of issues, so. If it exceeds a thousand dollars, then we'll come back to you guys, but we'll try to get some numbers on that. Get that taken care of. Uh, secondly, we had a planning and zoning discussion today with a citizen who wanted to bring a container unit into his yard, eight feet wide by forty feet long and use it as a shed. And our current ordinances say no, not allowed. But he was adamant with Shannon that he wanted this to happen. And he wanted to speak to the zoning board, so we heard him and let him know that, you know, gave him the, gave him the ordinance. That is not acceptable, we do not have any in-town residential area right now. There is one by Tesoro, because they're using it to, with the remodel. Other than that, there are no, none in there, and we're not applying the zoning. So we're actually changing zoning ordinances, so, or, or recommend it. And what I guess, how it's to kind of, so the shop question is gone.
You just have to figure out what it's doing.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, this person was quite annoyed and irritated when he left our meeting, our, our discussion. So if you hear anything, you'll know who it is, you'll type them.
Yeah.
You'll, but be very precise when he's talking, I'm sure. So just, just so you know that that discussion took place. All right, eleven, uh, eleven B, Hazen Chamber Fireworks Display Funding Request. So it usually takes about thirty-five hundred dollars to put on this, the fireworks display. And so far, there's been just shy of nine hundred dollars as of last, little, last week. And there's a balance of twenty-six hundred bucks that the chamber is trying to raise to get this done. I don't know what they've got now, but they're asking for our, our support. And Monty did look at what they've done in the past. Two thousand eleven, twelve, we did fifteen hundred. Two thousand thirteen, it did a thousand, fourteen, we did fifteen hundred. Two thousand fifteen, seventeen and eighteen, we did not give any donation. Now, two thousand sixteen, we gave fifteen hundred. That's. So, what would we, would the board like to do here for donation?
So that's, I guess. It's, I guess, like Monday. So they still need then twenty-five hundred, so. I agree that we donate two thousand dollars.
No, a motion by Stern for a two thousand dollar donation for fireworks.
I'll second that.
Second by Pillar, discussion. Casey?
So I guess in the past, I guess, how were they able to raise more? More like money?
My understanding was it was one business owner, Tom, who usually pick up the guns.
And he's no longer a business owner. So maybe in the future, they need to back off of that number a little bit or find another deep pocket to go after.
It's, it's always a challenge in a small town with your businesses that are generous to every need of the community, you know, whether it's the schools or, or otherwise, so. I'm, I'm very comfortable with this one.
And I think a couple of years, did they not have fireworks?
Correct.
And were there about one or two years that we did not do fireworks?
So that may be why we did not. Any more discussion? Rule call.
Stern.
Aye.
Hiller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Oppenheimer.
Aye. Motion carried, thank you. Two thousand twenty city budget. Yay! Monty, what can you tell us? Sent up as way.
Blue Cross Blue Shield estimates ten to fifteen percent. The preliminary numbers I sent to you is at twelve and a half percent. The current inflation rate is right around one point nine percent. So if you're considering an adjustment for wages, yeah, numbers I sent in the budget is at one and a half percent. Other than that, just kind of getting feelers out there if there are any big projects, any equipment. This is what Dave already regarding equipment. You know, just kind of, I guess, visit with your new portfolio of departments and see what, what their needs are. We'll obviously have to do several more discussions on the budget and set up a meeting one evening. Get through it, we have to have something certified to the county auditor by August ninth of this year, since the town falls on the weekend. I know Nancy, and some discussions with the, the fire hall over there. They've got a couple of field, field trucks or whatever that are, are quaged that there, there may be some discussions that you won't have with them on that.
Okay.
Understand what that might mean dollars wise.
Okay.
This, this is my first crack at it here, so I just look it over. If there's something that catches your eye, let me know one more. Are you looking for any action this evening? Or is this just a heads up? This is just your heads up. Okay, the next long meeting is going to be covered, yeah.
Was it last year that Blue Cross Blue Shield, we got lucky and it was.
I know.
It went down, down, okay. That won't happen again, so. Okay, thank you for the info. I know one thing I've been talking to Monty and Dave about too is, you know, possibly selling that, that grader. I know one thing I've been talking to Monty and Dave about too is, you know, possibly selling that, that grader and, and the backhoe and getting one better machine combined between the two. You know, the backhoe needs a lot of work to bring it up to speed to be safe unit and.
Way more than this works.
Yeah.
Or it's how the age of them.
Yeah, so. Yeah, we got a lot of little things that we can maybe address. Um, that leads us to the approval of the bills. Thanks, Pat, thanks, Chad.
I got a question on the bill to, uh, bill to, I guess, get on the rest of that, uh, hole, I guess that we bought, burned down. I guess, um, I guess why, why, why that? I guess, I don't know, I guess, the whole board.
The cleanup?
Yeah.
Good question. Is that overlooked, I guess?
Well, the reason why is I got, possibly, I gotta guess a question about it and I did not have a clue about.
We had, we had requested quotes from Pride and, uh, whatever it came in.
Yeah. I guess that's my, my fault, I guess, direct people towards me. I think we just made the move and had it cleaned up between the two cheapest things that we had.
What, if anything, did we find out about the, the water in the basement, except I think it was there, okay? It has been turned over to insurance, okay.
So I apologize for not bringing that to the board for the board's decision.
And when our discussions were concerned about getting it closed up, the temporary fence around it wasn't, wasn't gonna last very long and Dave's crew was really busy. So when Jerry and I looked at it.
To do it.
What, what did it cost? Twenty-nine hundred to send the bills. While, while we were there.
And if you haven't been by, you should look at it, but they did a really nice job. I had my house torn down and backfilled and it doesn't look anything like that. But I, I do, I apologize for, just, I guess I just did it, didn't even think, didn't even think twice about it, so. Did whoever you talked to have a better solution or just want to know what, what it cost or what?
Well, just accused us of sharing.
Oh, we didn't share any, yeah, no. Actually, actually, the guy came back off of this bid because Dave's people did, you know, some of the work. Yeah, so yeah, that was, there was no sharing, it's, whoever accused.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Okay, motion by Wolf. Second my stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Over to him.
Aye. Motion carried, major, thank you.